Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session Meeting. Today is Saturday, June eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. The time is nine fifteen A.M., or excuse me, nine eleven A.M. My name is Speaker William Lowe, and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Representative Sun McHenry to say our invocation, please.
Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we praise your holy name. Give and thanks for this beautiful day that you have blessed us with, Father. Thanking you for an opportunity that we have today, Father, to be able to conduct the business of our nation, to conduct the business of our citizens, Father. We just pray, Father, that the decisions made today will be, will be led by your spirit, that the decisions that are made today, Father, will have your blessing. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. But oh, Representative McHenry. Roll call, National Council Secretary Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Low.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Here.
Mary Crawford.
Present.
Joyce here.
Present.
Patrick Freeman.
Here.
Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge, excused. Nelson Hardo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Heft.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have fifteen present, one absent.
Fifteen present, one absent. That constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted will be valid. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We had an emergency session on May eleven, two thousand twenty-two, planning session, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-two. Pre-agenda, regular session, May twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, an emergency session, May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Speaker.
Yes, Representative Yehola Osborne.
No, this is, this is Anna Marshall.
Anna Marshall, so sorry. Representative Marshall.
That, that's okay, same district. Um, I just want to make a motion to approve the minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Marshall makes a motion to approve all the minutes with any necessary changes. Seconded by Representative Joe Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yeah.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yeah.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Speaker, fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. Minutes are approved. I would just make note for the record, we, since we're not able to get into the mound this morning, we are unable to livestream this meeting, so we will just post the recording as usual. So I just wanted to get that, get that known for the record. Onto the order of business. TR twenty-two dash zero eight-eight, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a contract with Eco Lab Inc. for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health Council Comprehensive Health. Sponsor, second speaker, Robert Heft.
Motion adopted.
Second speaker, Robert Heft, makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero eight-eight is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero eight-nine, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a United States Department of Agricultural, Agricultural Natural Resource Conservation Service Conservation Program Contract for the Muskogee Creek Nation Conservation District. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero eight-nine is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-zero, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to accept property donated, acquire all necessary documents, and piece property into trust. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt.
I said.
Seconded by, did you say your name, please?
Representative McHenry.
Representative McHenry makes the second discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-zero is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-one, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to accept property donated, acquire all necessary documents, and place property into trust. Sponsor, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker motion to adopt.
Speaker, excuse me, Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt.
Cloud second.
Seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-one is adopted. A trouble, excuse me, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-two, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a memorandum of agreement with the National Association of Conservation Districts for the benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Conservation District. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry makes a motion to adopt.
Second Randolph.
Seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-two is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-three, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR twenty-one dash zero nine-eight, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a certain agreement between Expedition Properties LLC and the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Authorizing the principal chief to place property into trust. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Charles McHenry makes a motion to adopt.
Hicks second.
Second Randolph.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-three is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-six, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR twenty-one dash zero nine-one, excuse me, zero one-nine, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a real estate contract and related documents for the purchase of property in Oakmogie, Oklahoma, to correctly reflect entire property that was purchased by the nation. Sponsor, Representative Nelson, Nelson Hardo, Senior.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Hardo makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-six is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-seven, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR nineteen dash zero sixty, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to purchase property located in McIntosh County, Oklahoma, to correctly reflect the nation's intended use for the track of land. Sponsor, Representative Daryl Proctor.
Speaker, Daryl Proctor motion to adopt.
Representative Proctor makes a motion to adopt.
Cloud second.
Represent, uh, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-seven is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-eight, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, amending TR zero four dash zero two-one, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to negotiate for and purchase restricted property in Oakmogie County, Oklahoma, located on the western boundary of the nation's tribal headquarters in Oakmogie, Oklahoma, to correctly reflect the nation's use for the track of land. Sponsor, Representative Nelson Hardo, Senior.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Hardo makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-eight is adopted. TR twenty-two dash zero nine-nine, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to, to renew a U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs Business Lease between the nation and U.S. Cellular for the use of an existing cellular tower located on the nation's You Follow Dormitory Site. Sponsor, Representative Daryl Proctor.
Speaker, Daryl Proctor motion to adopt.
Representative Proctor makes a motion to adopt.
Cloud second.
Seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash zero nine-nine is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one zero zero, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a purchase sale agreement for property located in Hughes County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one zero zero is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one zero one, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two Native American Business Development Institute, NABDI Grant for the Office of the Secretary of the Nation and Commerce. Sponsor, Representative Sandra Golden.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Golden makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hala Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one zero one is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one zero two, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, approving a commercial sale of real estate contract for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing. Sponsor, Representative Daryl Proctor.
Speaker, Daryl Proctor motion to adopt.
Representative Proctor makes a motion to adopt.
Hicks second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one zero two is adopted. TR twenty-two dash one zero three, a tribal resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the principal chief to execute a small ambulatory program grant for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Marshall makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Thomas Senior Hala Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR twenty-two dash one zero three is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero six-six, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the Jasmine Jack Two Thousand Twenty-Two Dream Starter Grant, running strong for the American Indian Youth for the benefit of the Muskogee Nation Youth Services. Sponsor, Representative Joyce Dear.
Speaker, I motion to adopt.
Representative Joyce Dear makes a motion to adopt.
Cloud second.
Crawford.
Seconded by Rep, uh, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero six-six is adopted. Uh, Representative Dear, did you have a, a special recognition with Miss Nancy Mason for this piece of legislation, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I would just like to congratulate Miss Jack on being selected as a twenty-twenty-two Dream Starter.
Outstanding. Congratulations, Miss Jack. If we were all together, we'd give you a big round of applause. So I just want to say congratulations, and we greatly support you. Thank you.
Madoff, Speaker.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Next item on the agenda, NCA twenty-two dash zero six-seven, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for Community Living, expanding the public health workforce within the Aging Network for Tribes Grant Funds for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Elderly Nutrition and Caregiver Programs. Sponsor, Representative Anna Marshall.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Anna Marshall makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero six-seven is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero six-eight, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of funds awarded from the United States Department of Health and Human Services, Indian Health Services for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsor, second speaker, Robert Heft.
Motion to adopt.
Second speaker, Robert Heft, makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yes.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yeah.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero six-eight is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero six-nine, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act Fiscal Recovery Funding for the Benefit of the Department of Interior Affairs for the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Complex Drainage Project. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second. Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yeah.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero six-nine is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero seven zero, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act Fiscal Year Recovery Funding for the Benefit of the Tiny Homes Program. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, I make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yeah.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero seven zero is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero seven-two, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, approving the FY two thousand twenty-three Indian Housing Plan. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative McHenry makes a motion to adopt.
Second by Randall Hicks.
Seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero seven-two is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero seven-three, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the National Association of Conservation Districts for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Conservation District, Explo, Conservation District. Sponsor, Representative Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Charles McHenry makes a motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded by, sounded like both Hicks, uh, Randall, but seconded by Representative Randall Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yeah.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Speaker, you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero seven-three is adopted. NCA twenty-two dash zero seven-four, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation appropriating funds to be used towards the purchase of property located in Hughes County, Oklahoma. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, I like to make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt.
Second, Thomasine.
Seconded by Representative Yehola Osborne. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice, or excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks. Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks. Randall Hicks. Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Speaker you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against. NCA twenty-two dash zero seven four is adopted. Last item on the agenda, NCA twenty-two dash zero seven six, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a budget modification. An excess of ten percent for the Muskogee Creek Nation Employment and Training College Work Experience Program. Sponsor Representative Joyce Dear.
Speaker I motion to adopt.
Representative Dear makes a motion to adopt.
Cloud second.
Crawford second.
Seconded by Representative Mary Crawford, discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Joyce Dear.
Yeah.
Patrick Freeman.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Nelson Hardjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Heft.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomasine Yehola Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yeah.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yeah.
Speaker you have fourteen in favor, zero against.
Fourteen in favor, zero against, NCA twenty-two dash zero seven six is adopted. That concludes our order of business, next item on the agenda, other business. Representatives, do we have any other business for today's meeting? On to announcements, do we have any announcements?
Speaker.
Yes.
Uh, this is Representative Marshall.
Yes ma'am.
Um, I just want to remind everybody that July the twenty-eighth is that one day language symposium for those that are interested.
Great, alright.
Mark on your calendar.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much. Any other announcements?
Uh Speaker, this is Luann Bear, and we just wanted to introduce our new royalty. This will be their first event just came up and will be at the festival, so they just want to do a quick introduction if they can.
They certainly can, welcome ladies and please, if they're with you Luann, by all means.
Hello, can you, uh, can you hear me good?
Yes ma'am.
His J Stone Gold, Timo Yarji, Joseph Kados, I'm a Joga, Balan, Hukula, oh, um, wait, I'm sorry. Um, I'm Legida, Ijolidos, Daski, Gyal Yarji, Joposogi, Tarpi Yarji, Dadi, Momen, Amy Yarji, Those. Oktaha, Hachi, Andjogodakados, Momen, and Masosa, Alabama, Andjogodakados. Hello, how are y'all today? My name's Timo Yarji, I'm, um, I'm from the Deer Clan. My mother is Gil Yarji, my grandparents are the late Tarpi Yarji and Amy Yarji. I'm excited to be here, we took a lot of notes today. Sorry couldn't see y'all in person, but um, I hope y'all have a great day.
Thank you so much. Buto.
Buto.
Miss Luann is Shinoa with you?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, alright, the floor is yours ma'am.
Thank you. His J Stone Gold, Shino Barnett, Jodha Jifkados, Wudkogui, Amalagirados, Ban, Kolobogagan, I'm a Jogados. Manazama, Mikosakka, Jogo Aidos, Amidona, Niakaos, Roger Barnett, Momen, Stephanie Goodvoice, Dutch Gogetos. Madow, hello, how are you all? I hope you're having a good morning. My name is Shino Barnett, I am the new, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three Junior Miss Muskogee Nation. I am of the Raccoon Clan, I attend Manazoma Baptist Church and my tribal town is Niaka and I'm seventeen years old. My parents are Roger Barnett and Stephanie Goodvoice and I'm so glad I could be here with you all today.
Thank you so much, uh, Miss Luann, do you have any final comments for the introduction?
Um, we're just gonna be at the festival doing everything, we had to get the tennis today. And we did a quick buy softball and so we'll see everybody during the festival.
Okay, great, well, ladies, we are very proud of you on behalf of the council, we we just say congratulations and we look forward to seeing you grow as our royalty, so thank you all for. Being able to speak with us and being at our meeting via Zoom, so good luck and stay cool out there. Alright, next, uh, next item on the agenda, or excuse me, any other announcements, one last call for announcements. Hearing none.
Speaker.
Yes.
President Hicks.
Yes sir.
I just want to say happy Father's Day to the fathers out there and, uh, I seen, uh, on a marquee the other day and it just. Really, really made sense, and this is, this isn't just for the fathers, the mothers too, and, uh, it said. A father. Hey, let me think now. A dad is just a dad to the world, but to their family, they are the world. And and that's, that's from then, I just wanted to say happy Father's Day and to the mothers, happy Mother's Day, I know it's late, but still. Uh, and just enjoy your day, thanks sir.
Outstanding, thank you and and great, great move, yeah, well said. Uh, definitely happy Father's Day to you all and I hope you eat plenty of food and get some cool items, so yeah, happy Father's Day. Representative Hicks, thank you for for the most kind words, sir. Adjournment, on to adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Seconded by Representative Nelson Hardjo. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, we are adjourned, I would like to ask Representative Sandra Golden for our benediction, please.
Thank you Speaker, let us pray. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day. Business for the nation, we also ask that you take care of those people and give them strength and encouragement. If they're sick and shut in and grieving for their loved ones, all these things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, Madow, Representative Golden, we are adjourned at nine forty-seven AM, enjoy your day and please be careful out there, it's a hot one, madow.
Buto.
Oh.
Madow Speaker.
Yeah.